Good evening. It is 6:00 PM and we are going to call to order the regular meeting of the city of Crescent City this October 2nd, 2017. We did not have closed session tonight, so there will be no reporting out. So if you would please call the roll.
Councilmember Fallman?
Here.
Councilmember Magrino?
Here.
Councilmember Keim?
Here.
Pro Tem Short?
Here.
Mayor Innscore?
And I am here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Councilman Fallman?
Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll open up general public comment tonight. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is either on our agenda or off, that's within our jurisdiction. Public interest items are also acceptable. However, just note that there's no action that we can take on any items that are brought up tonight and cannot take extended discussion, but we can refer those to staff for future action, which may include placing it on a future agenda. All comments need to be directed towards the entire council. If you'd please approach the dais to the microphone, state your name and county residency for the record, and try to keep public comment to approximately three minutes. So do we have any general public comment this evening? Seeing no general public comment, we'll close public comment and we will move on. We do not have any reports and presentations tonight. We do have some items on our consent calendar, the regular meeting minutes from September 18th, the warrant claims list for the last two weeks, also the bi-weekly payroll report, a adjustment to the budget for the human resources for the city manager recruitment, a budget adjustment for the window repair at the cultural center, a resolution adopting the changes to the 2016 CBDG contract, and then the contract for the micro enterprise program guidelines. Do we have any of these items that we need discussion on? Seeing none, then do we have a motion from the council?
Move to approve consent.
I have a motion to approve the consent. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Pull.
Oh, do we have any public comment, I'm sorry, on any item on our consent agenda? Alright, would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Fallman?
Yes.
Councilmember Magrino?
Yes.
Pro Tem Short?
Yes.
Mayor Innscore?
Yes, very good. Thank you. Under ceremonial items, we have a very special item this evening. I'd like to introduce Chairman Ito and Mia Miller, who's a special advisor to the city of Rikuzentakata, Japan. Chairman Ito is the chairman of their city council. We got the opportunity to meet and get to know one another when we visited in February as we continue to work towards the building of a sister city relationship between our community and the community of Rikuzentakata. We have some from the high school here, students who have been part of that whole process of seeing the value of this interchange, and we want to take that to the next step. We've seen some wonderful interactions with our students and students from Rikuzentakata visiting and staying in our community, and we want this to be something that our communities as a whole share in. So I'd like to introduce Mia and Chairman Ito, and if you would like to address us and share just a few words, and then we have a proclamation that Chairman Howard and I are going to share.
Konnichiwa.
Good afternoon.
Watashi wa Rikuzen Takata City Council's chairman.
My name is Ito, and I am the chairman of the Rikuzen Takata City Council. The mayor, Mayor Toba of Rikuzen Takata was initially scheduled to be here with me during this week, but for reasons we will explain later on, he is unable to attend at this time. Mayor Toba was very much looking forward to visiting you here this week after having received you, Mayor Innscore, city council members, and members of the community, as well as the chair of the Board of Supervisors from Del Norte County. And in his place, I would like to share a few words. Our relationship started with the Great East Japan disaster of March 11, 2011, and the giant tsunami that hit our city and the subsequent tsunami that hit yours. The tsunami that hit us took away our boat, Kamome, from the high school, Takata High School in our city, and two years later washed upon your shores here in Crescent City. And the Del Norte High School relationship and the Takata High School relationship, the students, the very deep bonds that had been created, is something that we as a city very much want to continue fostering. Our city has a very sad history, very much like yours, where we have been hit by multiple tsunamis throughout our city's history. But with each tsunami, there is subsequent resolve and the determination to keep moving forward, and that is also something that we share. We are a community that has the spirit to continue moving forward, and we also have the goal and the cheerfulness to create an environment that is productive for our youth, and that also is a common goal that we share among our two communities. The bonds that Del Norte High School students have created with Takata High School students, we now want to bring that up to the adult community and create, continue to create, and deepen our bonds between our two cities. Mayor Toba's words and his desires are reflected in this as well, and our hope is to be able to bring a larger delegation, Mayor Toba included, as well as members of the community of Rikuzen Takata here, hopefully next spring. And so that is our goal, that is our desire, and we hope that at that time we will be able to see it again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a proclamation, and I guess the easiest way is I'm going to bring the proclamation, and Chairman Howard and I are going to present it, but I'd like you to be able to translate it maybe line by line and read it with us so that Chairman Ito knows what we're doing. So we're going to do that, and then we'll bring it back to the council. City of Crescent City, County of Del Norte, proclamation welcoming delegates of Rikuzentakata. Whereas the city of Crescent City, together with the county of Del Norte, do welcome our friends from Rikuzentakata, Japan with open arms and warm hearts. Whereas it is our hope that the activities we have arranged for your visit will be beneficial in learning about our local government, traditional cultures, business industries, emergency preparedness, and disaster recovery efforts. Whereas we furthermore anticipate that you will find meaningful conversation and connection with our citizens and community leaders. Whereas former President Ford of the United States declared October 2nd, 1975 through October 13th, 1975, as Japan-United States Friendship Days, and a celebration in honor of the first state visit by a reigning emperor of Japan, Emperor Hirohito, to America. Whereas in honor of that historical designation, the timing of your visit to our community, and the importance of the ongoing camaraderie between our two nations, as further sealed by the bond that we have established. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Crescent City and the Board of Supervisors of the county of Del Norte, on behalf of our citizens, do hereby declare that October 2nd, 2017 through October 13th, 2017, as Friendship Days between our two communities, to be observed and celebrated by all who hold to this common dear connection dear, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Very good. Thank you so much. What a wonderful opportunity that this has presented to our communities, and I can't stress any more highly how important it is that we continue to build on this relationship. We have seen the value through our young people, and we need to follow their lead. Oftentimes, we as adults think that the young people need to follow us. In this case, the roles have been reversed, and we owe it to both of our communities as leaders to make sure that this relationship not only moves forward, but that it grows beyond anything that we could have possibly imagined when that boat washed up on our shore. So thank you so much, and thank you for those who are here tonight to support this effort. Yes? Perfect. This would be the time to do so. So any of the students that would like to come and share about their experiences, I think that would be good for our community to hear about. Well, here you are. So come on up and tell us your name, and tell us your experience.
Are you going to translate? We haven't translated. Okay, sounds good, good. I'm Samantha Fuller. I'm a senior at the high school, and I had the opportunity to go to Japan, the second delegation that went, so the last one that went to Japan, for the students, of course. To say that it was the most humbling experience of my life is completely an understatement. It completely changed the way that I view the world, completely changed the way that I plan to live my life in the future, and it's just, it's something I want everybody to get involved in, and so thank you for what you guys have done and how much you guys have pitched in in keeping this going. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Thank you so much. Good job. Somebody else?
Hello, I am Mackenzie Webb, and I am the vice president of Japan Club at Del Norte High School. I would like to share three experiences I had while meeting the students from Takata High School. First, as a host family. Second, a trip to the Hollywood Cinema. And three, a trip to the wild, wild west. Number one, three days with strangers. Can that create a lifelong lasting friendship? And you can't talk or communicate without a language barrier? Well, my answer is yes, you can. I jumped at the chance to be a host of a family for Takata High students. I was very nervous, but I shouldn't have been. The girls couldn't have been more friendlier. We bonded while watching My Neighbor Totoro, and they were excited and surprised that I was a huge fan of it. Yuki and Kika were so clean and organized that my parents said, "If those teenagers can live like that, then so can you." So I have no excuses when I have a mess in my room. Our family is from Oregon, and when we think of California, we think of Hollywood. My mom and I bought a basket filled with Hollywood items and tickets to our local Hollywood cinema. It was as close as we can get to Hollywood. We went to see the animation movie Sing, and I learned that both of them had never been to a movie theater in their entire lives, never. Yuki and Kika broke out into laughter. Little did I know, or little did we know, that the little dancing red pandas in the movie spoke Japanese, and they had to translate for us. Our next adventure was to the horse barn. My sister Brinkley took them to meet her horse. One had never seen a horse, much less rode on one. The other saw a horse, but once in a circus. There was nonstop laughter over the funny feeling of a horse's mouth on their hand while giving them a treat, or when they plugged their nose with the stench of horse poop. Yuki and Kika are now officially Crescent City cowgirls. You learn so much by being open to more cultures. Now I shall take you back to the boat, Kumome. If she didn't make it her voyage across the ocean, all of us wouldn't be here tonight, or I wouldn't have met my amazing long-distance friends, whom I will treasure our memories and friendships forever. Kumome is a symbol for hope and friendship. She had dealt with the adversity of the ocean waves bashing against her and all odds against her favors. She reminds us all two things. One is hope. Even when there are terrible things happening, good will come eventually. Number two, friendship. Homadashi. If we all had friendships like these, the world can become a better place. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Arigatou gozaimasu.
Anybody else? Wow, that is amazing. Thank you so much for sharing. That solidifies why this is so important. Thank you. Okay, we have just one item of actual city council business. I think we're going to move pretty quick, though I don't think I'm going to set the record for an official meeting, because that's 26 minutes and I only have four left, so I don't think I'm going to make it, but we are going to move on through. Mr. Weir?
You could make this record by moving this through quickly.
Yes. Mr. Weir? We have, under new business, repairs to the existing wastewater treatment standby generator. The radiator. The radiator conversation.
Yes, radiator at the wastewater treatment plant for the standby generator.
And you have a PowerPoint?
We do, we do.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Good.
Is that because somebody complained?
It is exactly the reason.
It might have been because...
Yes, just what would naturally follow a great presentation we just had was wastewater treatment plant generator. So yes, now that we're all primed for this. So the wastewater treatment plant obviously has specialized equipment, not only with the processes that we have to treat the wastewater, but all things that go with it, and the generators is no different. So this generator at the treatment plant is an automatic start generator, so as soon as the power goes out, it automatically kicks on. It's not a manual operation where somebody has to push a button. Automatically comes on, the treatment plant continues to function. This generator is 1,250 KW, which probably doesn't mean a lot to most people unless you really know, you know, your generator sizes, but the big trailer-mounted generators that you'll see a lot of the city trucks towing around from lift station to lift station, those are about 30 to 50 KW. So this is 1,250, so a lot bigger. To demonstrate that size, we have a couple of photos of the generator itself. This one probably does the most justice to show you just the actual size of the generator. You can see we have a treatment plant operator that's standing here. The black portion you see here is the actual radiator that needs repairs. So with this generator, over the last couple of years, we've started to experience generator or radiator leaks with it. We've repaired them. We've hired a company to come in and put a special seal on it. We repaired it in-house, but those are just small repairs. It's now time to actually replace the generator radiator. So we went out, we received quotes. We had three quotes to actually replace the radiator, re-core the radiator is what they call it, which is basically just replacing a lot of the fins and tubes and different things like that. The quotes came in all right around the same dollar amount, which means everybody's seeing the same thing. The low bid was from Cummings out of Arcata for about $78,000, which is what we're asking the council to approve tonight. Peterson Cat also came in at $83,000, and then our third bid, which wasn't a firm price, but that was from Pacific Power Generation, and that was around $81,800. So they gave us a quote even though they weren't able to commit to it. As an alternative, the other option is to replace the, instead of re-coreing it, actually go and replace the radiator with a new radiator. However, that was an additional $20,000. There isn't an extended warranty that comes with it, so you're basically getting the same thing, it's almost like a refurbished type of computer part. In talking with them, by far the fastest way to accomplish what we're wanting to accomplish is to re-core. That's two to four weeks. If we were to go to a replacement of the radiator, that would be about 14 to 16 weeks as far as the lead time goes. Obviously, this generator is vital for the operation of the treatment plant. If we don't have it, power goes out, which it does multiple times throughout the year, the treatment plant's going to fail, and we're going to have a massive sewer overflow. Questions from the council regarding this? Just opportunities to make sure that we're prepared for this coming winter.
After the radiator is repaired, how long will this, in a ballpark number, how long should it last? The refurbish?
The refurbish, about the same as putting in a new one, so anywhere from six to 10 years, which is what we've experienced with this particular scenario. Now, there are some things that we're going to look into doing as far as the treatment plant itself. So right now, the louvers, which allow the airflow to come in, they're basically just left open, so when it starts up, they're just draws the air in. It also allows the air to come in when the generator's not running. So we can add an automatic louver, automatic louver type scenario to it, where once a generator fires, then it opens up so it's not exposed to the salt air as it has been in the past. So that might give us a little bit longer longevity out of this.
Excellent. Thank you.
I want to thank you, Eric, for putting up with my emails on this one, and Mike, I appreciate that. When I first saw the staff report, having a little bit of a mechanical background, I was taken aback at the dollar figure and thought that the public would be also, until I realized it was a 1,250 KW generator. And then now I'm understanding what's going on. Still, in our conversation, I brought up the possibility of our crews doing that, and you explained to me very well, and I just wanted to make it public that apparently if we have a repair that's over $45,000, we have to go out for bid, knowing that a new radiator costs $55,000 just by itself. I guess we're kind of without choices. Something that's relatively this simple, and... and obviously it's huge, so it's not simple in every way but the fundamental repair is not complicated. It's just a lot of work. I have a lot of confidence in our folks at the city and I thought that this was well within their ability to do, but we can't. So, I appreciate you guys' feedback in answering my questions this week and also bringing the illustrations here for the public and for the rest of the council.
Yeah, no problem there and I do have all the faith in our mechanics. We're very fortunate to have the people that we do have there. I spoke to Jason Boardes about this. He was heavily involved in getting the quotes and kind of analyzing exactly how we're going to go about this fix and I think that this method is going to be the most expeditious as far as getting it done, getting it done quickly and then we can keep up with the rest of our repairs that are going on on a daily basis as well.
Thank you Eric.
During the time that the work is being done, do we have another bypass mechanism to have a portable generator on standby so that if we had a power outage that we would be able to continue to run the plant?
Yeah, so part of this quote is for them to bring in another efficiently sized or effectively sized generator. They'll place that, they'll hook it up to the automatic start system. So even during the time that this generator's down, we'll have a temporary portable generator that'll be brought in to automatically start.
Great, thank you.
So this $78,000 that you're quoting us, that doesn't include the louvers or it does?
It does not.
It does not, so you're going to be asking for more money later?
In a future budget, once we have that project fully vetted, then we'll be asking the council to approve some money for that if we think it's going to be beneficial.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, council? Mr. Follman? No? All right, thank you, Mr. Weir, appreciate it. Do we have any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the council for action.
I move we authorize the city manager to execute a purchase order with Cummins Pacific in the amount of $78,001 to receive and re-core the existing radiator from the wastewater treatment plant standby generator.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Pro-Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor Inskor?
Yes, very good. We have one last item. It is a letter that the council, you should have all had a chance to preview. Councilmember Keim and I met with the healthcare district and the county to talk about our ongoing concerns regarding healthcare in our community and specifically the issue regarding the out-of-network charges that people are receiving because of Envision Healthcare or M Care, which controls the operations of the emergency room at Sutter Coast Hospital and we agreed that our respective boards would contact Envision Healthcare directly and express our concern about the fact that they do not recognize our two primary insurance providers in our community and just let them know that that's important to us and that it is creating an undue burden on the members of our community. And so, you'll see the attached letter to them and to respective individuals associated with Sutter Coast and those involved in our state government.
Mr. Mayor, I have reviewed the letter and I moved that we authorize the mayor to sign and send a letter to Envision Healthcare regarding business practices.
If you have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on the letter? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. Any final words? Scott, would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Pro-Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor Inskor?
Yes, thank you very much. We are at the end. Do we have any legislative matters?
Mayor Inskor, can I interject one moment, please?
Yes, please.
Ms. Miller actually has a letter from Mayor Toba that she would like to read before we close this up.
Oh, very good. Sure, no, that's fine. Yes, please.
This is a letter from Mayor Futoshin Toba to Mayor Inskor. The Honorable Mayor Blake Inskor, it was a pleasure for me to host you and your delegation earlier this year in February and I appreciate the chance that I had to meet with you at that time. I was very much looking forward to my visit to Crescent City and Del Norte County this October and I must offer you my apologies at this time. Recent firings of missiles from North Korea have flown over our region and specifically the northeastern portion of Japan and the citizens of my city are very concerned. I am of course very concerned and I know that the Far East as well as the United States are also on heightened alert due to North Korea's activities. We are all very concerned. Due to these actions taken by the North Korean regime, I unfortunately must delay my visit to Crescent City and Del Norte County at this time. The safety of my citizens and their peace of mind is of paramount importance to me and under these conditions, I must look at visiting you at another date. Ito, the Chairman of Rikuzentakata City Council, will visit you in my place as well as Amia Miller, who works for me in the city. It is my hope that in 2018, I along with city employees and city business leaders will be able to visit the City of Crescent City in Del Norte County. Until that day, I ask for your patience and for your understanding and again, I apologize for not being able to visit you at this time. I look forward very much to the day I can visit the City of Crescent City and Del Norte County. Futoshin Toba, Mayor of the City of Rikuzentakata.
Thank you.
I have an original letter for you in English and Japanese, which I will give to you at a later date.
Thank you. Please express our appreciation to Mayor Toba and our understanding of the current situation and our commitment to ensure that we continue to move forward and if that means that I return again before he can be here so that we can make this relationship continue to grow. We are committed as a community to do so. I'm committed as a leader to do everything within my power to do so and so give him our appreciation and assurance that we will not allow other people's actions to deter us from continuing to build this relationship for our two communities.
I will, thank you very much.
Okay, any legislative matters that we need to address? All right. City Manager Report, I ask city manager, interim city manager Young to just give us an update on the direction that we provided regarding the potential sewer rate increase and the outreach that we've been working on for the last couple of months. So if you could just briefly give us an update as to where we're headed with that?
I'll keep the summary short and all but we hope to bring, no, hope to, we'll bring an ordinance to the city council once your next meeting, October 16th, to proposing to increase the rates by two and a half percent. It will go as a consumption-based ordinance on the rates. That would be a person who's going to basically pay for what they use as opposed to the flat rate that we have, at least on the residential. The two and a half percent, while it is not tied to any consumer price index, represents pretty much the cost of increase of products, goods, labor and so forth over the last year or so. Last couple of years have been ranging in the two to three percent and two and a half percent, I think is about what it is for the last quarter. We're proposing that they would not go into effect until May of 2018. The reason for that is that we're basing, while it is consumption-based, it is based on the lowest months or the average of the lowest months, which are generally November through February, November, December, January and February and that will allow us to get those four months and this year, everybody would have that as their basis and then we need a month or so to, of course, implement it and to get the bills out. Following that would be proposed increase for an additional two and a half percent a year later. That wouldn't be until May of 2019. We propose to introduce it on the October 16th meeting. The mayor and others have talked to Senator McGuire who's having a town hall meeting here in Crescent City in October on the 26th and we some discussion at that time. The mayor would probably make a presentation and hopefully we'll be having another meeting, a public meeting after that. The adoption of the ordinance, assuming that it's acceptable to the council, would not occur until November 20th or later. We would meet November 6th, however, that's two days short of one year since the election and we have to have at least a year pass so our next meeting after that would be November 20th and it could be in December. That would depend on the council's action and any changes that you may feel that might be necessary. We are going to be sending out postcards. They will go out this Friday advising the order sewer customers that this matter will be on the council agenda for the 16th and that of the town hall meeting on the 26th. And I think that pretty well summarized.
Very good.
Anything else I may have missed? You've been a part of our discussions and has Linda and Eric. So that, at least the summary.
All right.
Any questions?
Council has any questions for Mr. Young?
Will you email me that timeline or email us that timeline?
Excuse me?
Can you email us that timeline that you just laid out? Thank you.
I will do that.
I would just ask that as you, as we begin planning this next week for the October 16th agenda, that we take a look at the items on that meeting and items that can be pushed to a future meeting, like the November 6th meeting. We do that so that we free up as much time. This will probably generate some significant public comment and I think that we need to avail ourselves to be able to vet this out as fully as possible in our first public meeting and make a good first show of this and allow our community to engage. So staff, if you can encourage staff to look at items that can be pushed to November, that would be my desire, please.
Okay.
Anything else? All right. Very good. Okay, we can report out quickly. I know that we had tried to keep the meeting tonight at a minimum. Is there anything specific that anybody needs to address or share with the public for tonight?
Nothing significant from my meetings.
All right, very good then. We will be adjourned until our next meeting, October 16th, right here at the Quinn Center, closed session at 5:00 PM. Thank you.